Council, you will please come to order. We do have a quorum tonight. Mayor Pro Tem Rowe is expected to be here shortly, running a little late. And Councilman Schaffner also notified us that he was going to be a little late. It is 7:00. In just a minute, I'll ask everybody to stand. We'll be led in an invocation by our town manager, Tom Klass. Following that, we'll say the pledges to the American flag, followed by the pledge to the Texas flag. There are flags up here behind us. There's also flags that way, which means council doesn't have to turn its back to you to say the pledge. So if we would please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, a day that was not promised, but a day that you've given us nonetheless. We come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as we make decisions that will affect our town's residents, staff, council, and visitors. And Lord, continue to remind us that everything we do here today, and all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
We'll say the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pledge to the Texas flag.
Pledge.
Honor.
Connor, the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. May be seated.
Obviously, we don't ask.
That's why the mayor wants it printed up there. All right. It's time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council in any matter of whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holliday, didn't see that anybody signed up?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience that wants to address the council on any matter? Seeing no one requesting that, we'll move on to our announcements and reports. Receive town manager Klass's update and provide input regarding the following: March 6, 2018, primary election, Back to Nature event, and staffing. Mr. Klass.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Early voting for the March 6 primary election begins February 20th and ends March 2. The location for the Denton County voters will be at Denton County Southwest Courthouse on Canyon Falls Drive in Flowermount. The location for the Tarrant County voters will be at the Southlake Town Hall in Southlake. And sample ballots will be available through the Denton and Tarrant County election websites. Early voting, I'm sorry, election day voting will be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on March 6. Denton County Democratic Party voters in precincts 4031 and 4032 will vote at our fire station. Denton County Republican Party voters in the same precincts will vote at the Seaborne Building this year. And Tarrant County voters in precinct 3500 will vote at the Fellowship Church in Keller, Texas. We've also got a Back to Nature event. Our spring event this year is scheduled for March 17. It will be between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. at Trophy Club Park. And as in the past, the town will be partnering with Keeping Trophy Club Wild, and will feature reptile demonstrations, archery, horseback rides, and much more. And then lastly, I'm very pleased to announce the hiring of our new recreation superintendent, Brian Tenick. Brian comes to us from the city of Watauga, where he has served for the past 16 years, the last eight years as the recreation superintendent. He will begin with the Town of Trophy Club on February 26. And I will have him here at the next available council meeting to introduce him to you formally. We also are recruiting and accepting applications currently for two police captain positions, a building inspector position, a permits clerk, landscape maintenance worker, and various summer camp and pool workers as well. And with that, I'll take any questions from council.
Council, any questions on that report? Hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you, town manager Klass. Item number two, receive a town council liaison update. Discussion of Sane Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Councilmember Schaffner is the liaison, and he had no report, even though he is late. Let me know that he didn't have a report. All right. Item three, receive an update from councilmember Fleury regarding the town's involvement in Kindness Awareness Month. Discussion of Sane.
Thank you. So as everyone is aware, this whole awareness campaign started last September with the proclamation of Suicide Awareness Month, and then Anti-Bullying Month Awareness Month in October. And we really have not stopped since then. This month, being February, was Kindness Awareness Month. And it really kicked off more of a campaign for kindness with several entities involved, including the Town of Trophy Club, Northwest Independent School District, our four NISD Trophy Club schools, to include Lakeview, Beck, Medlin, and Byron, also local nonprofit HKC, and our community volunteers. This was kicked off on our last meeting, our retreat, with the proclamation of Kindness Awareness Month. And we've had two days of assemblies at our four Trophy Club schools, from Brian Williams, the founder of Think Kindness, thinkkindness.org. He has done, I believe, seven assemblies in the last two days across four schools, and also a community or parent assembly last night. We had a great cross-section there represented. We had Sherri Lewis, who has been priceless in helping promote and market our campaign from kindness for the town, also Tim Finney-Niffius, and Kelly Cassaway, also great volunteers with the town on Parks Board and Stars and Stripes Committee. We also had representatives from Lakeview, Medlin, Beck, PTA, and Byron Nelson High School, PTSA was out there in force last night. Also, parents, there's students were there. We also had Dr. Myers and Tammy McClure from Byron, and of course, Andicap at Nikki Wise from HKC as the liaison for the whole Think Kindness movement with Brian, which has been amazing in our schools in just two days. The impact, you'll be able to see in just a minute when we show a short little video of all the kids during the assemblies of all four schools that Nikki's son Connor was so gracious to put together after school today, in about, what, an hour, Nikki, like really quickly? So we thank you, Connor, for that, and really appreciate your efforts. And I would love for you guys to see what these two kindness assemblies have done for our kids just in the short two days. And also, don't forget, this Saturday on the 17th, we are hosting a Fun Run for Kindness. And this is an event to bring our community together and also spread kindness globally, not just locally. We are having a shoe drive, per se, where we are collecting new or gently-used sneakers to send to children and families in Africa. In Africa, the kids aren't allowed to attend school without shoes, and so it is a really huge deal for them to get a pair of shoes and have the opportunity of education in order to better their lives. So even if you don't want to run, walk, participate in the Fun Run, please come on by and drop off some shoes. We also have collection boxes throughout all our school campuses, right here at Town Hall, also at the Mud Building, and we're going to have one at the fire station and police station, I hope. Thanks, guys. And throughout different places in our community. So be on the lookout for that, new or gently-used. Someone said today, our local Walmart's got them on sale for $5, so no excuses there. Thank you so much, and enjoy our little clip of these school assemblies from today and yesterday.
What's going on to all the schools across, because it's more important to all the schools out in Long Island. I'm in the great state of Texas. Everyone say hello. 5,000 active members in just 15 days. Did you guys enjoy it? Grace has promised and said I would go back to Missouri, kept that promise, and went down 14 times. But then I also made her a promise that I would do everything to my power for her to come to the United States. And your school gets to experience something that's a first for her, as a first for any school that I've ever spoken to. Grace is in the audience right now. I don't know where she is. Grace, come on down here. Give us some applause. What do you think of Texas? She's only been here for like two days, guys, so. And I'm like, you're going to, what do you think of Texas so far?
Texas is beautiful. Your school is big. Not just big, but big, big. It's like the biggest university in Kenya. I'm happy to be here. I love you guys. Thank you for having us. In this life, all we need is kindness. Be kind to yourself, be kind to your neighbor, be kind to anyone who is around you, and you will make our world a better place to live. We can change, we can all change the world with a lather of kindness. Thank you.
What are you going to do? What? Woo!
So just real quick, I know it was a little loud in the auditoriums there, but those were little snippets from each of our schools. And as you can see, they were all super excited, even the high schoolers, even the older kids. And Grace, the young lady that spoke at the end, she was one of the children at the orphanages that Brian from thinkkindness.org has been visiting for, I believe, the past nine years. And he was able to bring her here. She was able to complete all the way up through high school and college. So one person can make a difference, and that was her message, no matter where you're from or what your circumstances are, being alive is a gift, and make the most of it. And one person can make a difference. And spreading kindness, I learned a quick little fact. Statistically, you know, research, white papers, everything, kindness spreads faster than viruses. So imagine that in our schools with these kids. So when you go home, please spread the message of kindness. It's free, it doesn't cost anything, it's easy to do. So thank you for allowing me to give the update tonight.
Thank you, Alicia. So you mentioned Connor, is he in the audience?
His little brother and his mom is. Nikki, why don't you stand up and say hello?
He wanted to be here, but he is at a band function at Byron, so.
Well, please express our gratitude to him for putting together the video.
I will, thank you.
Appreciate it, appreciate that support. Alicia, thank you. So you could still, as she said, you can still bring your new sneakers or gently-used to Town Hall or to the Mud Building in their boxes there to receive those, and to the Fun Run this weekend.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. It is time for the consent agenda. It's all matters are consolidated to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, does anyone wish to remove any of the items 4 through?
14.
14. Seeing no one wishing to do so, I would then entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items 4 through 14.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items 4 through 14.
Second. All right, I have a motion by councilmember Lamont, a second by councilmember Jensen. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous, it does pass. We're on our regular session. Item 15, consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation naming Barry Mahaffey, I don't know if I said that right, as honorary canine service dog for the day on February the 13th, 2018, and providing an effective date. We do have, not councilmember, citizen Susan Estrom, used to be a councilmember, who is on our animal shelter board, and probably everybody in the audience knows that she is the local advocate for dogs, for sure. Susan, do you want to say anything before we vote?
So first of all, yeah, it's no surprise to anybody what I do. Susan Estrom, 269 Oak Hill Drive. So in the rescue world, we do whatever we can to help each other. And so I saw a feed in Facebook one evening about Barry Mahaffey, who was rescued through an rescue organization, and they thought they were going to be able to rehab Barry and get him adopted. And unfortunately, they found out that he had testicular cancer, and it was pretty well spread out throughout his body. So he went into hospice care and was adopted by his hospice family. And his hospice family created a bucket list for Barry. And one of his things on the bucket list was his favorite movie is Canine Cop. And he wanted, so they were looking for an organization or somebody who could help him be a canine dog for a day. So of course, the first call I made was to our mayor and said, hey, here's your crazy animal advocate, would you guys consider doing a proclamation and making this dog a canine dog for a day? And the second call was to our police chief, and without hesitation, everybody said yes. And then I worked with Holly to get a proclamation made. So we're here tonight to recognize Barry, and I hope somebody else is going to read the proclamation other than me. But I just want to thank everybody from the bottom of my heart. I have adopted two cancer dogs myself. One has since passed, one is in hospice with us, and she just had her third mast cell surgery last week, and she's doing well. But it is a great pleasure to be taking an animal from a shelter that you know might otherwise just be euthanized, and give them all the love that you can while they're here. And that's what the Mahaffey family is doing for Barry. And so this is scratching off one of those items on his bucket list, to be a canine police dog for a day in the Town of Trophy Club, and I can't thank you enough.
Thank you very much. So do the caregivers want to stand or say anything?
Well, he's not going to stand.
You can do it from there, that's fine.
Thank y'all for doing this for him. It's been awesome to do his bucket list and see how much love from perfect strangers that he gets, and throughout the community, throughout the DFW community and states. He's gotten care packages from out of state, and it has helped raise awareness for what we do with urgent animals at Fort Worth. And I really, this dog was not supposed to see Christmas when I first got him, and tomorrow is Valentine's, so thank y'all. And I really truly believe in the bottom of my heart that the love that he's received has helped him make it this far. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for what you're doing, and it's nice that y'all all came out and supported this and brought him here. A lot of the proclamation is things that you've already heard from Susan. He came from the Fort Worth Animal Shelter and is under the care of Urgent Animals of Fort Worth Rescue. And whereas Urgent Animals of Fort Worth Rescue believe that every animal should have a home and a family before they pass on instead of being unclaimed. Barry went into Foster to adopt program and was adopted by the Mahaffey family. And whereas Barry is 16 years old and has cancer that has spread throughout his body, and whereas Barry's cancer was deemed to be terminal, and with the family created a bucket list of things that might bring peace to the dog and be memorable. Whereas Barry is the sweetest, most lovable dog ever, and he has five furry siblings that he adores and loves them very tremendously. Now, does that mean that he has dogs that are his siblings? Or those people with you that are furry? Okay, I'm sorry.
Questionable.
Questionable, I got you. Whereas part of Barry's bucket list developed by the family was to be named an honorary canine dog service dog for the day, and whereas Barry's favorite movie is Canine Cop, and the Town of Trophy Club is honored to make Barry Mahaffey a rescue dog as an honorary canine service dog for the day. Now therefore, the town council of the Town of Trophy Club Texas hereby names Barry Mahaffey as an honorary canine service dog for the end of February the 13th, 2018. I would entertain a motion to approve the proclamation. I'll move it. Oh, go ahead. All right. Got to speak fast, Greg, if you can. All right, anybody else want to speak? All right, hearing none on call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the proclamation, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
So Susan, here's a copy of the proclamation.
Awesome. And we would love a picture with the police chief and the mayor and Barry.
All right. So will Barry let us do this?
Do you guys want to go down to the photo area with the flags? That might be a nice background for Barry.
Go over there to the side of your left.
He will.
Okay, that's cool.
Come on. Momma better take him.
Did you say that, Alicia? It came from above. report for fiscal year 2018. Amber, do you going to present? There you are.
Good evening, council. Emily Upshaw from Valley View Consulting is here with us tonight to present the first quarter of FY18 investment report. And before I bring her up here, she's right behind me, before I bring her up here, we've just, we're really excited. We were looking year over year at where we were last year at 123116 versus 123117. And we've seen some pretty exciting interest rates rise from the Fed. Just to give you some perspective, we actually decreased our operational cash by 3%. It's a small amount, but we decreased it just based on operations for this current year and what was needed in that time. But last year, we ended at .80 with the general amount of yield for the entire portfolio. And as of 123117, we ended at 1.3. So, you know, it's looking at a difference of $29,000 in interest last year at this time versus $41,000. So it's an increase of 43% or 44% that we've seen. So it's exciting. It's mostly based on the Fed rates continuing to rise. And our strategy is just investing in short-term vehicles so that they mature, and we can reinvest again as the rates rise. So we're not locked into anything for long periods of time, losing out on that gaining yield. So with that in mind, we'll go over the quarter Q1 investment report, and I'll bring Emily up here.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Today, I wanted to go over the quarterly report with you because it is in a very different format than what you're used to seeing. So I just wanted to take you page by page. If you do have questions, let me know. We're here to present this anytime you want us to. Sometimes we've become a broken record, but we like to present the results so that we're as transparent as possible. So we'll start with, page one is our strategy summary. This shows quarter to quarter, the total portfolio and the asset class that you're in. So these acronyms that we have, DDA is Demand Deposit Account, that's your basic bank account that you're doing day-to-day operations out of, MMA is Money Market Account, MMF, Money Market Fund, and LGIP, Local Government Investment Pools. Those are still liquid, but they're investments for, okay, they're investments for excess funds. And then you also have CDs and securities, so those will be your longer-term investments. So we just want to show quarter to quarter. We do have a restated September 30th. That's really because we added your payroll account. It's technically cash that the town owns, so we added that into your portfolio. On this page, we also present the current quarter average yield, which is 1.3% as Amber pointed out. We also have the fiscal year to date average yield. That will change, with this being the first quarter of the fiscal year, it's going to be the same, but we just like to keep track of it throughout the entire fiscal year so you can see how it's changed. We also include the three-month rolling treasury yield and six-month rolling treasury yield. Those are just average benchmarks. Your portfolio is actually a 40-day WAM, so you're looking at less than two months. But the three-month and six-month treasury are general benchmarks that we'll look at. As you mentioned, your quarterly interest income is $41,260 for this quarter. Just to let you know, prior quarter, you did have $47,134. I will always bring those numbers with me to let you know what prior quarter was, but just as time goes on, we'll see that year-to-date interest income climb, and that's what we want to see. All right, this page is a little busy. The treasury yield curve in the top left is generally what we'll focus on, that's the market that you're operating in most of the time. The top line, the blue line, is the current quarter where the treasury yield curve currently is. We also show prior quarter and where it was one year ago. The point of this chart is to show where short-term rates are, that's where we're investing, generally cash all the way up to two years. We're not going beyond two years at this point. So as the Fed decides to raise that rate, FOMC raises the Fed rate, we'll see that continue to notch up, and we'll take advantage of that by investing in short terms and just keep rolling them along. Okay, this page shows your entire investment holdings. Everything above the blank line in the middle are liquid funds, so if you need to access those within one day, you could. Everything below that line is currently invested in CDs. And one thing I'll mention about these CDs, they're a little different than you'll continue to see when you're working with our group. These are brokered CDs. So the book value and par value are going to be the same. What happens, you get interest from these CDs, and it gets swept into that Dreyfus Money Market Fund. So all of the interest doesn't actually show up on this report because it's swept into that account. So you're not going to see that reflected, but as we continue to do direct placement CDs, you'll actually see that interest on these reports. Some important things to look at on here are the life. You're currently at a 40-day WAM for your portfolio. Per your investment policy, that should never, ever be above 365 days. We're well below that, but that's just something to keep track of. And the current yield obviously is 1.3%. This is for those that like visuals. The portfolio composition is basically the same exact thing that you saw on that strategy summary page. It's just broken out to show you that pretty much your entire portfolio is liquid at this point, 85%. As we look to invest, which we've done this quarter, you will see that percentage decline. But right now, we're trying to take advantage of money market accounts that are earning higher than the current pools that you're in. So we'll see that change slightly, but it'll still be a higher percentage. The top right chart, again, shows that your portfolio is very liquid. We'll kind of spread that out a little bit more to take advantage of yield. The bottom left is the portfolio performance. We're comparing you to Tech Pool because generally, that's considered an account that if someone didn't have time to make investments, they would place everything in Tech Pool, so that's what we're comparing it against. And then finally, on the bottom right, you have your total portfolio. In general, when we have time going on, what we'll want to see is a general trend upward. That means your town is growing, and it's growing at a pace where you're not spending too much revenue, more revenue than you're bringing in. So that's what we'll look for. The next page is your book value comparison. This page is going to show all of your investments from the prior quarter, and then it's going to show purchases and adjustments, so that'll show any deposits that you had, any interest that was paid, or any money movement into an account, and then the sales adjust, call and mature. And then the sales adjust call and maturity column will show any maturities or any money movement out. So negative numbers, not necessarily bad. It's just showing that money was moved out of that account or a maturity occurred. In this case, one thing to point out is the 3.992 million that went to text pool, a lot of that was related to your property tax revenue. So you'll see influxes like that in this quarter and a little bit next quarter. But we'll eventually get those spread out and invested for you. The market value comparison page is almost the exact same information, except PFIA requires that we show market value. Again, with these brokered CDs, they have a different market value. If you were to go out and sell them, you would have to go through the broker and they would have to be sold on the market. They're a little bit different than direct play CDs. So they do have a market value. You'll see that quarter to quarter change. They have small negatives, and I just want to reiterate that those are unrealized gains. The strategy of the town is to buy and hold. So you're not going to recognize any gains or losses unless you sold off in an emergency. But that's not the strategy. So there's little negatives, but they're not actually recognized. All right, the next couple of pages is the book value allocation page. This is just showing a breakout of your entire portfolio by fund. It's an easy way to see where your investments are held. So right now, you currently have all of your CDs in the general fund. Next quarter, you'll see three additional CDs in that fund that we've added. And we're also going to be adding a money market fund that will show up for general fund and for some of your bond funds. So you'll see an additional account there as well. Right, and the next page is the market value allocation page. Essentially the same information, you just have to show market value as well per PFIA. And then finally, we have your book value from September 30th. We just show that going forward, you'll have prior quarters on there so that you can see where the movement was. But again, it was restated just because we added your payroll account. So it's slightly different, but we were using the data from previous reports. A little mundane, I'm sorry, but...
No, you're fine.
So that's the general report. Just to let you know, this is kind of a living, breathing document. If there's anything that you think would be helpful to add, we can always go back and add to it. I know there was one item that came up in the committee meeting, and going forward, we can do that. But we had some concerns about looking at prior data because it was actually using different values. So comparison, percentage to percentage was not technically the same. But going forward, we can provide what you were looking for for the percentage change.
Thank you. The budget committee did meet with our financial staff. Anne with Emily came out and went through the report and had some discussions. Greg, you're a member of that committee, and Philip Schaffner is. Do you have any comments as a result of that? All right. Any questions, anyone? Seen no one. Remember, you can request to speak via your pads.
That's true.
Yeah, okay. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the investment report for fiscal year 2018 for the first quarter.
I'll make a motion to approve the first quarter investment report for fiscal year 2018.
I'll second.
Is it necessary for us to review and approve each quarter?
I don't know if it's necessary or not. It depends on what, how you feel, the committee doing it. Is there something we need to do to meet the guidelines to approve it? Or just can we receive it?
You can receive it, but we're always here to present it and go through it if you have questions.
That's something we can maybe kind of decide as a body. You have a budget subcommittee that meets with them. We, in fact, discussed whether or not we would put this on the consent agenda or not, but we felt like this was our first time to receive it. And for everybody to be able to meet our consultants, it was a good time to at least give that up. But, so if you want to comment that from this point forward, you're okay with putting it on consent, or you're welcome to do so before we move on.
I'm definitely open to put this on consent.
Anybody else?
I would agree.
Okay, so what kind of move that way?
Okay, okay.
Where do you live? We want to see how far you're driving.
Austin.
Oh.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm up here frequently. I have basically a second home here, so.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Emily, thank you very much for coming up and appreciate your working with it. For the residents in, either watching the tape or in the audience, sometimes people, residents, will approach us and say, why aren't you investing in funds that make more money? Why aren't you investing in the stock market? Those kinds of things. Well, it's public funds, and it's probably most not appropriate to take risk with your money. So all of that is taken seriously as to how we deal with that. And you saw so many accounts because things that are in local banks, by the state law, has a limit of how much is insured. So it gets spread out. So if things really got bad, we wouldn't lose our money. So, but that's kind of what's happening. We're always open for that information. And if anybody wants to see more of that information, we can provide it for you. Are we going to put it on the website for people to get to after each quarter? Or how are we going to deal with that publicly? Just wait and get requests?
I'm very happy to put it on the website. That's...
Okay, so we can...
I like that for transparency.
For transparency, I think it's good to do if people know they can go here and see that information. So let the minutes note that Councilmember Schaffner has arrived at 7:37.
And he wasn't missed.
Cue the music. All right. Item 17, consider take appropriate action regarding an ordinance of the town of Trophy Club ordering and calling a general election to be held on May the 5th, 2018 for the purpose of electing one council member to place three and one council member to place number four on the Trophy Club Town Council each term of three years and providing an effective date. We have ordinance 2018-01 that ordering and calls the general election for May. Anybody wish to move the adoption of this ordinance?
So moves.
Schaffner moves, and Jensen seconds. Any discussion? So where did Holly go? There's Holly. All right.
I don't know. I'm not logged in.
There's an app over there. Are you getting logged in?
Yeah, I get logged in. Go ahead.
Okay. Holly, did you have something you want to say?
No, just standby for questions.
All right, so I had a, I had some little correspondence with Holly today just to make sure we had the information available. We're calling the election at this point because there's a due date for when it has to be called by. That is after our council meeting, but there's also a date you have to call the election by a date, which we would miss without a special council meeting. So we need to call it. Even if no one else files to run for the council seats, we'll cancel that portion of the ordinance if no one files at that point.
Correct.
So that's just general information for you. Anybody have any questions about the election and this ordinance? All right, we do have a motion and a second for item 17, which is calling of the general election for the council seats. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Glad you arrived. Mayor Trott, just in time.
That's right.
Before we vote to cancel it in two weeks, right?
Yeah. That is a little strange, isn't it? Timing's not real good. All right. Item 18, consider take appropriate action regarding an ordinance of the town of Trophy Club ordering and calling a special election to be held on May the 5th, 2018 for the purpose of holding a continuation referendum for the Trophy Club Crime Control and Prevention District and holding a reauthorization election for the sales tax, for sales tax for street maintenance and provide an effective date. It's ordinance 2018-02. I would entertain a motion to approve this ordinance. I'll move. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thought you were going to do it, so move.
Jensen.
Disappointing.
Seconded. Any questions about this?
The CCPD will be for five years, and the street sales tax maintenance will be for four years. Both of the sales and use tax of one, one-fourth of 1%.
All right, any discussion or questions? Anyone wishing to speak? All right, hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It was unanimous. 19, discussion and provide direction to the town staff regarding amending Section 14.02.352 Landscape Regulations of Division 7 Development and Design Standards of Chapter 14 Zoning of the Town of Trophy Club Code of Ordinances. So we have, artificial turf is the major thing that's been changed in the ordinance. And I'll recognize town planner Lisa Payne for comments.
Mayor, council. Due to council direction at a recent council meeting, we have revised the landscape ordinance to include artificial turf. Staff is looking for direction tonight. We're not looking for approval quite yet. I added a small section about artificial turf. And then since the whole landscaping regulations were open, then I just also made other revisions. A lot of it is just clarification or updating of ordinance names. Then there's a few things that were just irrelevant or just needed to be updated or taken out. And so I'm available for questions if you want to discuss any of those things or move anything around.
All right, anybody wish to speak? Greg Lamart's recognized.
Just trying to rack my brains. Are we limited to the backyards or is it still open for debate or sort of putting it...
It's open to debate. Basically, just listening to council last time, and many of y'all said the backyard. And we, so what we did is because the zoning ordinance considers a backyard, when you think of it that way, as anything behind the back facade of the home rather than inside a fence. Then that's why we wrote it that way. That can be changed if y'all are thinking anything behind a fence or anything on side yard or the front yard. That's completely open for discussion.
And the other thing is, can we enforce or restrict how it's installed? I'm sure there's high-quality insulation in there, something just almost like a rug that just rolled down. Can we enforce that if we do decide to do it in the front and the back?
I believe that we can. Tommy would be a lot better at answering that stuff as a building inspector.
Good evening, mayor and council. Out of all the processes that were researched, they're all pretty much the same. It's an eight-layer process, starting with the grade and working its way up with drainage and things of that nature. I don't know that it would be necessary to specify a particular one of them. They, they all looked equally to be as strong. It's more the material that they identify, nylon, polypropylene, and, oh, there's one more. Polyethylene. So nylon's your strongest, polyethylene's your second strongest, and polypropylene is your weakest. They said the polypropylene, or polyethylene is the, is the biggest choice because of price, but still maintainability. The nylon is typically used for surfaces where there's a lot of activity on it, like your, your sports fields and things of that nature, where you can stay on it time and time again. It doesn't wear down, lose color otherwise. The polyethylene coming in second to grade, but it's softer than the nylon. And the, the, the polypropylene, they said doesn't, doesn't have a long last, lasting life. Now, you know, it could be limited to the grade of that material, but as far as the actually application, the actual application of it, it's pretty much the same on all the, all three of the products.
All right, thank you. So I put in a speaker request and then Councilmember Schaffner after me. I sent an email, kind of talk, asking a question about the grade or type or whatever that term might be to say that. So I was just noticing that changing the ordinance didn't affect that at all. There's no mention of that. And I just wanted to bring that up for council. I don't know whether or not that, I don't have enough experience with it to know if that's something that somebody wants to be able to control or not. And then the other thing that I noticed was the back was from the back facade of the house. And so one of the thoughts I had was, well, if you have a house that the, the backyard kind of extends down one side, that would mean that you had to have some other material to cover your yard other than turf at that one side. So it would, at least if that side was where the facade was. So do we want to, some way to deal with that in the ordinance? So those were more questions than they were trying to decide. So Schaffner, you?
Yeah, I, I think when this came forward, I, I kind of gave direction as far as looking at like California, Phoenix and things like that. And I'd, I'd much prefer staff bring us something that's a little bit more comprehensive, you know, as far as the artificial turf part than just what you have in here. I think it would be better to debate maybe what you want to see in it rather than for us just to throw out whatevers, you know? Because the, the research that I did, I mean, you know, the state of California had a suggested ordinance that they sent out to the cities, and then the cities could, could refine that, you know, add different things, do what they wanted. And so it, it, most of the cities, they talked about slope. You didn't want, you don't want to go beyond like a 4-1 type situation because of installation unless you have an engineered stamp or something of that nature. They talked about the height of the grass. They talked about different, like three shades of color. Some cities required three different, you know, so that it looked more natural than just one color. And same thing, like you were talking about, the, the style of the artificial turf, whether it be nylon or different things. Some cities wouldn't allow nylon. They just required those type things. So I guess, I guess, you know, it, it, I think it would be a difficult process here to try to throw out different things. I, I think I'd rather see what staff would recommend and then bring it back to us, and we can then debate those type issues. And, and same thing with, with Greg, rather front yard, side yard, backyard. I think, I think that all of those are, are valid points that probably should be discussed. But I'd kind of like to see what you, your recommendations are and bring those to us and let us then debate those or go over those type things. That's, that's kind of my, my recommendation.
Ryland?
Yeah, I like where Philip is headed with that just because you guys have to be responsible for implementing and enforcing guidelines that we might come up with. So I, I think it probably would be a faster process if we, if we do, if we follow the guidelines that Philip's... I think a lot of the knobs and levers that y'all described are the right, the right things to look at. But yeah, I think I'd prefer to take a look at a, at a sort of a finished product of what you guys think would work given the nature of the, what we're looking at versus what's, what's specific to Trophy Club that you know is out there now. And then if there's anything that maybe we want to tweak, we could just debate the tweaks rather than, rather than kind of have a scatter shooting trying to bring it all together from scratch.
One of the things I liked about the revision was there seemed to be some control over it being designed appropriately with a grading. I don't know if that means there's going to be an inspection to see that it's graded properly or not. And if so, where does that fall in the proposed changes? I too would like to see tighter guidelines. That's the reason I asked the questions was what do we want to approve? Color, depth, kind of things. I don't want to be unrealistic to make the cost too high for citizens, but I also don't want to maybe have people complaining about, my neighbor has this and I'm having water problems, or I can see it because they have a wrought iron fence and therefore I see the backyard and it looks not so attractive. I'd like to see something in the ordinance that dealt with whether or not we're going to allow it on a side yard at all. And if so, does that mean it had to be behind a wooden fence or at least a fence that you couldn't see through? I don't know. I don't know what's best, but that's what I wanted as people are saying the debate about it and what are the pros and cons. So I was glad to read through it. It made me begin to think about these things, and I appreciate if we can do a little more research. I'd like to see maybe some comparisons of where we've done it in Texas. Where are the ordinances in Texas if there are any? And then... And then checking with those people, what kind of problems have they had with that? Obviously, it needs to be an ordinance that's been approved for a little while to see what happens.
Sure.
I know from looking at the turf at various sports facilities, um, I'm not sure that somebody's going to buy that kind of turf to install in their backyard, but maybe so. That kind of turf has a lot of material that's mixed among the so-called grass pieces, and so it's obviously softer, but it's little rubber, rubber pieces in there. And I don't know if that's what they put in houses or not, so.
They typically use that or sand, either one, and that, and that's its sole purpose in life is to make it have a softer feel and, and help for the absorption of water and also the drainage.
All right. Phillip?
Yeah, and I, I think that Tommy mentioned, uh, the last time that they looked and looked and looked and couldn't find anything in Texas, and that's why I said you may have to go to California, you may have to go to Arizona, things like that, to do some of that research. I do, I do want to say this, that I really appreciate, um, when we open an ordinance like this, you going in and cleaning it up. That's one thing that I think that this council, uh, in particular, has just preached and preached and preached, that if we're going to open it up anyway, let's clean it up. And so that was a good job, and I appreciate you doing that.
Well, thank you. That's pretty much going to be a standardized process anytime we get into any part of it. And even in times when we're not directed to look into a particular item, we're going to be working on getting it, getting it caught up.
Yeah, good. Thanks. Councilmember Jensen?
I support the rights of the landowner, and I'd really rather not get into debating what we allow or don't allow. Uh, I get it on a front yard, but I would, anything behind a fence, backyard, I could care less what the homeowner does. It's their property.
All right. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, let me just answer that. I think you have to be careful only because of drainage, and, and obviously, there may be ordinances that cover that, but if you're putting in something and then you put more water into another person's property, but I don't know. I just want to make, that's the only protection that I would want to have, you know, to make sure that we are not affecting somebody one house down, two houses down, three houses down.
And in the research that we did with this, and as far as the drainage, you know, this, since I've been here, this town has been very strict on drainage and maintaining it and not, you know, taking out the neighbor, affecting them in any way. And we've, we've had some issues with rain, even with the natural grading. But the issue of putting it in there to where they would have to provide us a grading plan at the end, because it's very important for people, they're, they're looking at aesthetics when they, when they put in, uh, artificial turf, you know, simply that, that and low maintenance, obviously. And also, it's a flat yard, or it's a very simplified yard where you don't have swells and, and berms and things of that nature. Those things serve a purpose. And when you're maintaining your slopes in the, the turf that you're putting down, it can be maintained where its gradient is no greater than natural grass and will flow the waters the same way. And if we get that grading plan at the end and it's verified, uh, that'll keep our drainage in check.
Yeah, and I think that a lot of the cities that I've read, uh, kind of to Greg's point, is that there's a, it's not just, you know, you think artificial turf, we're just going to go in and, and get rid of our grass and put it down, but they, they come in and, and take out like two or three inches of the soil and then, and then compact it and then put the, the additives, all the different things in there before they even put the turf. So it's, it's not just a, I mean, I guess you could have some, some weekend where you're trying to do it on its own, but it's, it's, it's a lot more complicated than what it appears.
Right. It, it's, the ones that I looked at, they were all, they were an eight-layer type product, whether it was with natural growth on top, like when, if you want to do it on top of a building, for example, and not go with artificial turf. But the artificial turf was all pretty much an eight-layer process.
All right. Anybody else questions, comments? Staff, thank you very much. Lisa, any more comments?
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, I was thinking about when y'all were talking about the discussion and what staff should bring to y'all, um, that we can definitely do research on specs and things like that. But as far as, um, just the aesthetics, where do y'all want to discuss or do y'all want us to just decide and we'll just see fail or approve on where the grass is allowed? If it's allowed behind a fence, it has to be a certain kind of fence if you want to have the grass or the turf? Are those things that, because I mean, we don't have a strong opinion on it. We're happy to do whatever y'all would like.
All right. Tim?
Yeah, I, I want to just echo what Eric had to say, which was, you know, I'd be real wary of telling people what they can do in their backyards. Um, I don't think we're that type of council. I don't think we should be that type of town. Right now, we can put up what, 20-foot structure in your backyard and call it a playhouse, but you can't have turf under it. It seems asinine, so, um, you know, we want, we want to try to, try to think smart while we're doing this. Again, I understand we don't want turf, you know, in, in the front of the neighborhood, but there's a lot of, I've drive by a lot of homes that are dirt out front, look a lot worse than turf. So, um, you know, I want to make sure that, that we do, you know, definitely work on drainage, but err on the side of, you know, it's personal property, so they should be able to do what they want if it's professional.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yeah, I, I agree with what's been said, so I just want to make sure y'all are clear where I stand on it. In my opinion, if someone goes through, whatever process gets established here, and there's going to be guidelines, I know, in terms of what you guys require for installation, you know, the quality of the product, or maybe not the quality, but the grade of the product and things of that nature. If someone goes through that process, um, it's going to be, it's going to be something you're going to want next to your house. So I don't care if it's in the front yard, the backyard, on the roof, underground. I'm all for it.
Councilmember Schaffner?
Yeah, same, same with me. I, uh, Lamont has one on his street, Avalon, that, uh, looks a lot better than my yard. I will say that. And the leaves fall on it, and you, it really looks nice. And so I would hate to be the council that said you can't put that in your front yard because it really looks nice, you know? And I think that we will keep the, the guidelines tight enough where you're not going to have somebody, like, I think I sent Eric a picture today of the Boise something, it's blue with orange. You know, you're not going to have that. So I, I think that you will come back with something that is tight enough where it's going to look nice, you know? And, and I hope my neighbor doesn't do it because it makes your house look bad afterwards.
All right. Councilmember Lamont?
Yeah, just as the town matures, the new areas mature, the trees get bigger and create shade and becomes very difficult for grass to grow, not to mention wind up in a drought area again. I've replaced the front of my house twice with sod. It just can't take because I got these trees that stay full all year round. So you have a small piece of property, I don't see a problem with it. And like you said, the one on, on my block, you, once the leaves started falling, you cannot tell the difference. The first day was like, oh, but a couple days later, a little dirt, little leaves, can't tell the difference.
All right. So as a point of clarification for direction for y'all, because the topic has kind of come up, your focus has been on allowing turf in the backyard, correct? So not in the front yard. So does council want to have anything drafted that allowed it in the front yard? Or at this point, do you want to stay with just the backyard?
I'm okay with both.
Both?
Same thing. Wherever grass was.
So I think I heard three that say they're okay with both.
Yeah, it kind of turns out that y'all are okay with everything.
Okay. So I think you could go ahead and assume that they could do it anywhere in their yard.
Okay.
At least seems to be the direction that we're getting at this point. Anything else? Did any, did council feel that there was anything else that maybe we could give some direction that might help us in, in the future? All right. Staff, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We will move on to item number 20. We had a tabled item that had discussion and take appropriate action regarding the proposed loop road. Tom, after class, will give us a presentation or guide us through this.
Evening again. As you're aware from my staff report that I produced, um, for you this week, I met with the Corps of Engineers, uh, on November 13th. The purpose of the meeting was really to introduce myself and to talk with them about the, uh, loop road project and also to determine if anything had changed regulatory or otherwise since the 2014 loop road denial letter that the town received. Uh, I also wanted to determine at the time through the meeting what options, if any, the town had moving forward if it was council's decision to try to appeal the decision that was made in 2014. Prior to the meeting, um, I did a comprehensive review of the 2001 Grapevine Lake master plan, and from doing that, I learned two things that were important. Uh, I learned that the plan itself, the purpose, was to really identify an environmentally sensitive area in the core property, with the objective being to minimize the number of easements that the corps would give out based upon that designation. I also learned that they placed certain restrictions on the property if it was determined to be an environmentally sensitive area, which they ultimately did. I learned also that, uh, the requests, uh, were only granted, uh, when no practical alternative existed, uh, to moving a road in another direction away from, um, the environmentally sensitive area, and that they looked at, uh, the criteria, the, the least identifiable environmental and visual impact, something that was very important to the corps when looking on whether they would potentially approve, uh, the loop road. And the request must consider routing to an easement to an adjacent land outside the ESA if that was possible. Also learned that the corps considered, uh, the factors that they considered in determining a demonstrated need, which is something that the town would have to, uh, look at should council decide to appeal the letter. The demonstrated need would be whether or not there was an adjacent property, uh, to the ESA that could be used for an easement for the road, whether the proposed roadway, roadway qualified as a regional arterial, and what that means essentially is whether it traverses multiple jurisdictions. And then there was always whether it was a demonstrated safety need. If the town could demonstrate that, then it would be potentially something that could be considered. I also confirmed during the meeting that I had with the corps on the 13th, that the master plan that they referred to, uh, back in, uh, 2001 is still in effect, uh, and that there was a question, one of the council members posed to me about any impact of the Clean Waters Act and a recent presidential executive order 13778. What I learned was that has no impact whatsoever on the corps' determination. The Clean Water Act has nothing to do with the ESA designation, so that's something that we wouldn't have to consider, uh, in, in an appeal. And so what I'd like to just present to council is, should the town decide to appeal this, uh, what would have to happen is the appeal would have to be submitted through the Corps of Engineers, and it would go through a, really a three-step process in that it would start at the local Grapevine office level, Grapevine Lake, where they would look at the appeal and make a decision locally on that. The appeal then would have to go to a regional office in Fort Worth, it, the next step. And then the last step is up at the national level, and ultimately, the appeal would be heard, uh, by the Assistant Secretary of the Army for Civil Works. And that individual would ultimately make the final decision, uh, on any appeal that council might, uh, want to take. I followed up with the Lake Vine, uh, Lake Grapevine, uh, lake manager after the meeting, and it seemed through the conversations I had with them that they softened their stance slightly from when I had the meeting with them. They did acknowledge to me in an email that they, the impact to the ESA appears to be minimal, and a possible exception could be considered. So that was the first time, I think, that we've heard anything like that since 2014. The, um, lake manager suggested that should it be council's decision, that they could submit an update to the, uh, letter, an update with anything that's changed since 2014 with the town, and that they would consider that in, in an appeal. So that's where we stand, uh, with that process right at this, at this point. What I would offer, as well as if we were, the town was to appeal, uh, the process and we weren't successful in that appeal, um, there'd be a couple options that I would think would be available to us. The first being that we would, might want to engage with the, um, management of the country club. Again, my understanding is that if you'll look at the, the map that I have here, this is the, the, um, 2014, the last map that TNP did for the town. This was the last configuration that they came up with. This was a configuration that the corps, uh, at least acknowledged at the time that it traversed minimally the ESA, as opposed to, if you recall, um, some of the earlier maps, I'll go back to the first map, which is the June of 2000 map, and as you can see, it was before the Highlands was even developed. But you can see that there was a more north path for the loop road at that point, which traversed and still traverses almost the entire ESA. And then, um, I'll provide you an opportunity to take a look at the second map that I have for you, which was done in 2011. And you can see, uh, obviously, we have the Highlands there now. The loop road, the proposed loop road was changed slightly at that point in time, but it was still a north, a northern approach through the core property, which again, uh, goes through the ESA quite a bit. And then the last map that I have here, again, the most current, you can see, uh, is a more southerly, uh, it takes a more southern approach on the south side of the water treatment plant. What I would suggest is, um, if, uh, what I would think is if, uh, council decided to appeal and if we were not successful in that appeal, um, I think the options that we would have available to us, again, might be to at least talk with the, um, uh, country club property, because, uh, there was an approach that was even a little bit further south that would take us out of the ESA, but you would have to have the permission, obviously, of the country club to do that, uh, which is, is probably problematic, but again, that would be something that you might, would consider. And then another option that would be available, I would think, would be to seek some kind of congressional support, whether it's at the, uh, you know, state level, uh, national level. And then ultimately, we could potentially contract, uh, for an environmental impact study that might, uh, potentially refute the corps' study that they did. I would see those as potential options. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions or answer any concerns that you have.
All right. So I'm the first speaker that signed up. There were several areas that I thought maybe were worth exploring. First is, I thought it was interesting that the corps seemed to say they had no record of a requested loop road prior to, I think it was 2000 or something like that, uh, which, at least from our records, seemed like we had maps that showed that. It might be worth at least providing that form if we do decide to appeal and get any documentation we have. Secondly, I do support checking with the country club to see if there really is anything still going on about the UNT practice area. Somehow, there was going to have to be a road provided to get to that practice area. So how does that maybe fit or not fit within any plan? And then, um, on page 355 of the packet at the bottom of the page, um, was talking about, that the corps acknowledges minimal disturbance of the ESA. So there looked like there might be a couple of ways to address that issue, to even make it less disturbance of the ESA. So I'm in favor of trying to do some exploration and maybe at some point submitting an appeal or at least start that process as we find out data. Eric?
Yes, sir. So without a doubt, this will cost us money. I do not support doing this road unless it's proven that it is a safety enhancement. I would like to see a report by the fire chief and the police chief stating that, and without that, I don't support an appeal at this point. I don't support the loop road at all without that proof that it- I don't support the loop road at all without that proof that it impacts safety. Convenience, no. I do not support it for convenience, and I wouldn't do anything else until we prove that it's a safety enhancement.
Ryland?
I agree with what Eric's saying in that I think safety is definitely critical to this, to this situation. I also am a little more in favor of trying to pursue this path to the degree that we get to a point where we can put it in front of voters. My main goal is, I want to be able to, if at all possible, through the Corps, get us to a point where the people can decide, based on what we do on the cost, whether or not, once and for all, they want to see this road built. So for that reason, I support pursuing the appeal process in, under any condition, but I also definitely would like to see what Eric asked for in terms of safety. I think that's, I think it's a critical way for us to understand what we're dealing with here. As far as what, some of the comments that were made about the route of the road, personally, I think a road that goes any further south than what we're seeing in front of us right here on the presentation is a non-starter. A road that is, a road that is changed in any way to further avoid the ESA, just by my eyeballing it, would disrupt number eight, number nine, number 18, and the driving range significantly, and those on the Whitworth course, those three holes. This route, as I see it, still disrupts number 18, which I do see as an issue, although very slightly. So if this is the type of route we're going to kind of stick our, plant our flag on, I agree that we need to, we need to have the country club folks take a look at it. And because the way I see it, the portion there that runs sort of just to the east of the tee box of number 18 on the Whitworth, really needs to go slightly further east to prevent disruption there that would potentially be a showstopper for us. And there's already a dirt road there where I'm talking about, so maybe that's something to consider, or whatever the, whatever the private landowner there has to opine on that obviously is going to be critical to the viability of this, even if the Corps decides that it's something that they're going to allow. Yeah, so with that, that's, that's how I'd like to see this go forward.
Mamaw?
I'd like to throw out there, if it's worthwhile or if any interest in creating a citizens advisory board of private citizens, the old theory that private citizens might have more of a leverage with government entities than elected officials, it's a long-term thing, not at this, not for tonight, but just bring it back to us one time for what their task might be, number of members. If there's any interest in it, I think it might be a good idea.
All right. Kurt?
I'm pretty agnostic about the road. So what I would say is, I fully believe, I'm happy that you started this dialogue with the Corps again and that they seem positive. I would, I tend to agree with Ryland and Eric that there's zero chance of us getting an appeal unless we prove that there's a safety need. There's no way that they're doing this just to help our little townspeople make life a little easier. I mean, that is, I mean, at the end of the day, that's what we should be, there's zero chance, so.
Yeah, and let me, yeah, if you don't mind, let me-
I'm going to be honest when we're talking to the public, right? Zero chance that's going to happen, that they want to save you a little time to go to the school back and forth.
No, and I'll be clear, they made that very clear to me. The safety factor of the three criteria they use, the safety factor is the third criteria.
So knowing that, and Eric had kind of said this, is that's the only thing that I would be working on, is do we have a real safety factor? And if we prove that there's a real safety factor there, then we can take the next logical step. But I would not spend any money, I would not even do a citizens advisory council until we solve that issue, and whether it is or not, and then we can, we can take the next step.
I've talked with both the police chief and the fire chief at length about this, and we do have some anecdotal evidence, but I think it's going to be very difficult for us to prove, based upon my conversation with them, that this would enhance to any great degree safety for the residents.
Right, so I'm just trying to walk through this. So we need to prove that to get it. And right now, we don't think we can, so we want to keep 100% that whether we think we can or we can't, so we can come back to the residents and say, this is a non-starter, so we're not spending any money on it. We have qualified people looking at it. So it's not, you know, a political issue. It is, there's no way it's getting done. Reality is, you know, it's not a safety issue. Everything's halfway in between the town. We get to one side, we get to the other side. That's the tact I would take, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think that that's, it would be a huge convenience for me and my family, but obviously, that's just where I'm at. But you know what, I'd like to make a motion to task the town manager with creating a report of public safety, the need for public safety for the loop road, and bring it back to us at a future council meeting.
Second?
Third, fourth, fifth.
All right, so given the motion by Schaffner and seconded by Jensen, let's keep our comments about the motion. So I'm going to remove the speakers at this time, and if you want to speak about the motion, please submit. I guess Eric wants to speak on that.
Yeah, and I'm not looking for, I'm looking for an honest answer. I'm not looking for a prove, prove it, prove that we need it. No, give us honest, honest answer. So that's all I'm looking for.
So I would like to comment about that survey or study. It seems to me that data that I've seen in the past always only had hard facts when a service call, people left from the fire station, as opposed to the proposed increased capabilities if there was a road for safety. So if our crew was on one side down Indian Creek and all of a sudden, as they were finishing up, there was a call over by the high school, what was the safety factor there? We may not have those statistics, but if we're ever going to really have a definitive proof, I think you need to start collecting some of that data. How often do we really have to go from one side of town to the other that that trip time is affected by using our current roads? So that's the way I would kind of look at that, if it was me. Schaffner?
Yeah, and I think, you know, like Tom says, that this is the third criteria, but it certainly is a criteria that the Corps is looking at, you know, is public safety. And so I think that one thing that certainly should be considered is if our assets are on the west side of town and there is a major emergency at the wastewater treatment plant, you want to get there as quickly as possible because something there could happen because it's industry. It's the only industry that we have in the middle of our town or in our town. And so I think certainly that that is something that you should look at and perhaps involve carmen and the mud, you know, and see what they have there that could potentially be hazardous in dealing with that emergency. But I think a good, a report coming back to us then gives us the needed information to, one, to continue this appeal process, and two, it also helps in the appeal process by presenting to the Corps that there is a definite need as far as public safety.
Tim?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate that I want it to be 100% non-political. We want to find out if there's an actual need, and then we have to be honest with ourselves if there is not an actual need, right? That may be an actual need, it may not be an actual need. I don't know there, what the standards are with the fire department, how far you have to be away. You know, they may say, well, go build a substation for $2 million bucks and put something in there for a third of the price of what a street's going to cost. You know, they may say the loop road's the best thing, but just let's not be political about it, let's just do it correctly and come out with the real answer. Now, we're not trying to push a road on one side, we're not trying to deny a road on the other, we're trying to make sure we come up with the answer, so we know reality.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none, we will call for the vote on the motion. The motion was to task the town manager to develop a report, develop about safety and how it's affected whether or without the road. Is that correctly stated somewhat?
Pretty, pretty close.
Pretty close. All right, Eric, you agree?
I'm sure Holly will figure it out.
Okay. Yeah, as soon as she'll have a recording to be able to get it exactly for us.
She'll make me sound good.
Okay. All right, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. All right, so we dealt with that motion. Does anybody else have questions, any other aspect of the report?
Just like, just like to remind everybody that the prior council, not the Eric Jensen Council or the Garrett Reed Council, but the prior prior council spent the $2 million that was set aside for the loop road. They spent 1.6 million on the roundabout and $400,000 on Indian Creek, so that money's gone.
All right, Ryland?
Yeah, I do want to, I do want to kind of add a post text to what we've been talking about, and I think all you guys are on the right track in terms of, in terms of approaching the discussion objectively and trying to come up with the right answer in terms of need. There's another angle to this in that there are a lot of folks here who just want the road. And the town was planned 30-plus years ago with the assumption that the road would be there. So if we, if we do the work on the safety piece and there is no safety justification beyond the fact that it would, the road would be there that is not there, if there's no safety justification that outweighs the desire to not have a road over a creek bed, people are still going to want the road. And I would just caution against us completely dropping it at that point. I'm going to be interested to know, even in the absence of a safety question, what do we lose by simply saying, well, okay, can we still do it? I mean, it doesn't cost money to ask a question, you know? So it's not like we're going out and getting it engineered and all that type of stuff. So I just want to, I want to pursue this personally pretty heavily because I'd love to see it on a ballot, just because I feel like that, that puts it in the hands where the decision makers that actually need to be making the decision, because this, this does affect people who live here. It doesn't affect, it doesn't affect the folks that make the decisions about how to, whether or not to grant the easement, even though it is their land.
Well, yeah, I agree with Ryland. I'm not as lying in the sand as Eric is, you know, that if it comes back as, but I will say that, you know, there's a lot of people, it's going to be, it's divided. You see it on Facebook, we all see it on Facebook, but, but it certainly is something that the town, if you go back, 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 it is something that's always been on the map. It was taken off because of a development in Canterbury Hills, not for any council decision or just a backroom type deal. And so I agree that it's incumbent upon us to, to look at the safety because I think the Corps is going to want to know that information. But I think it's also, it's also a decision that, that I would love to see out to the citizens at some point, but there's a lot of factors, there's a lot of hoops to jump through, there's a lot of hurdles to, to go over, and it, money is going to be a huge issue. There's a lot of things that are going to be obstacles to overcome, but it certainly has, is not something that's just come, Johnny come lately. It's, it's been around and it's been a part of the plan for Trophy Club for a very long time.
Thank you. I signed up next to speak. I come down on the side of what Ryland was talking about and Philip talked about it. Let's get it to a logical conclusion. I couldn't make a decision about whether or not to do it or not based on the facts that I know today, and I wasn't going to make a decision about it without knowing cost and how that might affect what we do. We have a rough figure that T. Nolan Perkins provided for us, but I think those estimates were prior to the current proposed path. And I think part of the thing that made it expensive was trying to stay off the land to elevate the road slightly, because that seemed to be part of the engineering aspect. So at some point, it's going to come down to money for me to make a decision, and I'm going to have to get a little further. And I don't want to spend money on engineering without going further that it didn't cost me money to maybe appeal possibly. I don't know that or not. Eric?
I would love to put it on a ballot as well, and, but I know my council members know we are years from this being on a ballot. Citizens understand years from putting this on a ballot. So just make sure they understand, this is a long process. If it happens within the next five years, it would be fast. I expect it to take longer.
All right, Tim?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say something similar, also that I don't mind it going on, on the ballot. I'd love for the town to vote on it. I just don't want to spend a lot of cash getting it to a point where we know we don't have the safety component of it and we know it's going to fail, right? So I don't want to spend a lot of cash doing that. I don't mind getting it on there, saying, hey, do you want to appeal this? But yeah, the citizens should vote on it, I agree. That'll be fun, so I'll be there that weekend.
Yeah.
All right, Ryland?
Yeah, you guys, what you just commented made me realize I should qualify what I'm saying. I want to, I want people to be able to vote on it after we've determined what it will cost, which happens after we've engineered it, which happens after we've gotten permission, which happens after we've justified it to the people that own the land that the road has to cross. And I know all you guys know that, but we've, we've seen some evidence that some people don't understand that. And I, so just to make it clear, that's the last step, but I'm willing to push as long and as hard as it takes to get to that point, accepting any outlandish cost to get there, like you said.
All right, Schaffner?
That, the, the estimate that you're talking about, Nick, was that, that road?
Oh, was it? I thought it was the previous.
But again, that was in 2013, so you're talking, you know, that-
Double it.
...price is probably, yeah.
Thank you for correcting.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm going to cut off debate. I think we've killed the subject, so unless somebody really requests that wants to speak, but I will open it if there are any citizens that came to speak about this subject or ask questions, please approach the lectern if you wanted to ask a question or anything. All right, Tom, anything you else needed from that for direction?
No, sir.
All right, counsel, thank you very much. Item 21, discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration on the February 27th council agenda and items on the town council future agenda list. Whether or not it's added to the 27th, I'm sorry, Eric, you popped up, what did you want to say?
Yes, sir. I would like us to discuss the 2018 calendar and what days that, what council days that we have this year. I think there are some months that we don't need two meetings, November, December, possibly July. Would also be interested in not having a council meeting the second week of March during spring break. So I would love to discuss that, and let's iron out a full calendar. I would also like to see us in the future, maybe this be a retreat item each year, so.
All right, thanks, Eric. As soon as a part of your request is maybe the first date was spring break, is that maybe the earliest issue?
March 13th.
It surely ought to be discussed fairly soon, so would that say February 27th was the time to discuss that at least? So if we can discuss, add that to the 27th agenda, at least we can begin that. Will that fit what y'all think is the need?
Who can I put as his second?
Pardon?
Who can I put as his second?
I'll second.
Okay.
All right. I would like to add either to the 27th or a future item, a, a presentation and a discussion by council about PD-30 and the elevations that we have on file compared to pictures that have been circulated. Even the elevations that you got recently, Tom, from them seem to show things that were not in the site plan, at least, but of course, that's a, I realize it's a architectural rendering, but people are going to look at it and say, oh, it's going to have this, look, this nice pond and walking path and green space from one view, based on the elevation- pond and walking path and green space from one view, based on the elevations that you sent. So I'd like us to some point to really be able to see that detail, have an open discussion about it, and if that's not what they're really planning to do, we need to know that. So, anybody else? So then if you go to future agenda, item three, I think we have dealt with. Do you have anything else, Eric, about item three in the Veterans Memorial you want to deal with? All right, so Holly?
Really? Really?
It's your item on the future agenda list, so. So Holly, you can remove item three on the future agenda list.
Yes, sir.
And we're going to try to discuss the calendar as soon as we can, and whether or not the elevations of PD-30 are next one or the future, just depends on what's availability of information. Anybody else?
Never mind, I'll just, I'll watch Tom after the meeting.
Okay.
It's not an item worthy of an item.
Okay, so I think we have completed everything on the agenda. If there's no objection, we will stand adjourned at 8:31.